Distance learning students will continue to maintain that same schedule and expectations we had for them this quarter and quarter two as well, because that's what we've heard from students and from parents are saying it's really working compared to quarter one. Please maintain that system. We did it for quarter three and now hoping to do it, not hoping, but we know we're going to do it for quarter four as well. So what's happened is the students who are at home will be logging in every hour for each class. That's an expectation for synchronous learning and instruction and teaching in all of their classes. How do you advance? There we go. There you go. So while we are planning for students to come quarter four, we know that for some of our students, we can't just wait. It is another month, almost month of March. So there are a lot of days there. So students who need help now, because we would like them to finish strong quarter three before we bring everyone back for four days a week. So what do we do now is we identify a group of students who we would like to start bringing four days a week, starting actually end of Thursday, Thursday, Friday. We're going to have close to, I know at the middle school level, we bring in close to 150 students who will be coming in this quarter, four days a week, for that additional support. Those are hybrid students, majority of them. There are some distance learning students whose families said, we would like to come back quarter four and were saying, by the way, we would like you to start a little early because your child need that additional support and we don't want to wait that long. And every family that Dr. Edwards and I had an experience, every family we would contact that said, yes, thank you. We would love my child to be in school, to get that support while they're physically in the classroom. In addition to that, it was funded through a carryover achievement and integration funding. We were able to, at the middle school and the high school level, at all secondary, hire additional, hire teachers, our teachers to be that support, academic support. So for example, at the middle school level, it's an area of math. And now at the high school level, it's beyond math. I think it's math and English and other areas. And there, what's happening is actually it's more the evening time. So teachers will, are tutoring our students more in afternoon and the evening time. And that's one-on-one or small group supports for our students. So that's, it's already happening. And I believe for the students. Yeah. And I talk about that, that's additional support we have for students quarter three.
All right. And then the staffing to pull all this off. There's been a lot of processes that have gone on to look at, obviously, we need to take into consideration accommodations and leaves around all of this. So we've built processes to do that, spent a lot of time planning with Joe and Kate on protocols and what that looks like and how that affects our employees. And ultimately, in the end, what we, what we're really trying to do through all of these steps that we list here is be able to come up with some data that Incident Command can use that's valuable to making decisions. And that's really what, that's really what that's about. And so when we do that, this is a dashboard that we present every week and we continue to update it as we go along, because these are, you know, this four-square data dashboard is to give us an idea of where we're at on some of these significant things. For instance, the leaves and accommodations, you can see that's been a gradual climb and now we've leveled off. And we may see that start to decline as the vaccine has rolled out and staff can get both doses. We may, we're starting to see some people want to come back, who's been, who have been working from home. Open positions, we're sort of all over the board, just based upon the model we're in and what we need. And so we, we tried to adjust on, on the fly as we, as we changed models. So that one is kind of all over. Daily absences, you can see the two on the bottom. I, you know, some of this, we'll see if this levels out over the next week or two, as the vaccines and the reactions to the vaccines, we get through all of that with all the staff. We're managing, we're managing right now. And I think we're, we'll be interested to see what happens with the daily staff absences. And that is total absences for all employees on the bottom left-hand corner. But on the right-hand corner, that is instructional staff. So that's paras and teachers only. The rest of the staff are not included in there because our, you know, what we're measuring there is our fill rate, really. And you can see what has happened there. As we get to a certain point and absences go beyond, our fill rate starts to level off and will not keep up pace with the, the fill rate there. But again, I think it's worth taking a pause here and seeing what the next couple of weeks bring as we get through the vaccinations, as we get closer to spring break. And just to give you an idea, some dates there of when something happened, I think 262 sub-request was early December, maybe. And then it, or November, and then it dropped off when we went to distance learning, obviously. And now, as we start to bring people back, the trend starts to go back to the way it was prior to distance learning. So, questions for me?
You want to do it now? Okay.
All right. I can wait, too.
Yeah, let's, let's just wait. Jim's almost, we're almost done here.
Evening Chair Ruel, School Board Dr. Salo. A couple of items for custodial maintenance. We have daily execution of enhanced cleaning and disinfectant protocols. Marine Mullen has been working hard with Joel and Kate to come up with a really robust plan. And the custodians are doing a really good job at executing that plan. We have protocols in place for immediately addressing any confirmed exposures in our buildings. We get an email. Again, we reach out to our custodial staff and they take care of any issues immediately. We're operating our, excuse me, we're operating our HVAC, HVAC, sorry, systems to provide maximum ventilation to help. And our maintenance staff is, and leads are doing a really good job with that. Transportation. Again, Joel was talking about our vaccinations. Over 50% of our drivers have been vaccinated at this time. The bus company is really appreciative of the effort to include them in this. And it's helping us keep our buses rolling. Like elementary, we are setting up for secondary, same thing, some seating charts. It's really tough. But, you know, to help with contract tracing, we are doing the best we can. It's really difficult with kids moving around while the driver should be looking forward. That's what I tell them anyhow.
Very good idea.
Yeah. And routes and times, we haven't changed anything since beginning of school year. And that's been really helpful. It offers parents and families consistency in their routing information. That's the report. Thank you.
With Child Nutrition Services, probably the big note for that at the secondary level is again, when we talk about the contact tracing based on the physical distancing. So not going to be possible to have our students seated six feet apart. So we will work on having our students seated three feet apart, at least, at the lunchroom, which, what that looks like at a regular lunch table is students seated, seated every other seat. By seated every other seat, we're able to double the capacity at the tables that we currently have in the lunchroom right now. Then we will be doing daily registration as far as who is sitting at the table, so that if we need to go back and look at, for contract tracing purposes, we can do so. As far as athletics and activities, we are nearing the end of our winter season. The regular season for just about every sport is coming to an end here this week or next. And we've had, for the most part, a pretty successful season as far as COVID is concerned. We've had a few individuals who have needed a quarantine, mostly because of outside-related exposures. We did have one team that we put in a pause for a little bit of time. But otherwise, our teams have been able to get through. Most of our games have happened. We haven't had to cancel any games due to things on our side. We have had a couple lower-level games canceled because of the other school. And so we're continuing to follow the same protocols and will be doing so as we move into the postseason.
That takes us back to the timeline and certainly available for, for any questions that you would have.
Okay, Mary, I know you had one. Right, Mary?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about subs and paras and their availability, because obviously you saw the graph go back up. I think we've all seen or heard, you know, emails from parents about, you know, saying that, hey, there's a sub permanently in my class, or there's a sub for a sub, stuff like that. And, and I know that there, that's been an issue the whole year, given the pandemic. So I was just wondering if you could just focus on the availability, cost for teachers on call. I know that we had originally saved money in that space of what we normally pay for that. And that's starting to go back up. And what the status is?
Well, I think what we saw originally, when all this started, if you were to look at our graph and you compare the number of absences for a teacher, daily sub-requests for teachers versus paras, up until now, we have seen the majority or the higher number usually is the para-sub that isn't, that is not filled. And it's been the teacher that has been a lower number. We've seen that switch. I'm wondering if that's about the vaccination, where the last couple of weeks, it's been more teacher unfilled absences than there has been para-unfilled absences. As far as hard numbers, I can't give you those right now, other than what we have. But yeah, I would agree. I think principals have done an amazing job of trying to fill holes as, as the, every day is an adventure, I would guess, if we asked them of what that looks like to make that happen. And doing the best they can. I, I do believe that, that is a, that's a significant issue, but they're making it work with what they can. And yep, it might be times, and maybe the principals and assistant principals in here could speak to it, but there's times that you try to build as much consistency in there for a child as you can. It just sometimes isn't possible. And they're going to have somebody different throughout the week occasionally, depending upon the assignment. So I, yeah, I think I'd acknowledge that, that, that is the case, that oftentimes you're trying to find someone to be in front of them and you're trying to make it work as best you can. And that includes, I know, the principals going in and subbing themselves sometimes. So I, I can sure look at that and look at the hard data. If you'd like me to, I can pull that together, what that looks like. As far as the bigger one with teachers on call, I'm just not prepared to speak to that right now, what the original cost was before, because teachers on call have been here since I've been, since I showed up. So.
I'm only bringing that up because I know that some, one of the cost savings we've heard is that, you know, substitute costs obviously went down with distance learning and they went down overall during the hybrid. Also, not only because they were hard to get, but also because, you know, it just wasn't there. And substitute teachers often don't have insurance, et cetera. So they're less likely to want to work. And that did save us some money. We do spend quite a bit of money on that. Now, and when, when I was looking at that graph going back up and the need, I'm wondering if that cost savings is going to stay the same, or are we going to make up for it?
Yeah. I, I think that's something we can sure look at as we get closer to the end of the year and we understand where the leveling off is, to be able to, to look at what that is. I had a thought there, but I lost it. So, but I think it's worth, I think it's worth taking a look at. We're doing the best we can with fill and what we have. And teachers on call is trying to be as, they're, they're doing everything they can to try to fill the subs. One of the things we did, I know, I know what it is now. One of the things we talked about, and I think one of the reasons we have that, that gap right now, I think attributes it, is because people are being, they might be being told that they're getting the vaccine tomorrow at nine o'clock, at nine o'clock at night, and then they have a reaction to it. So they're gone a day or two after. And we know there's a strong correlation between when someone puts an absence in and the chances of it being filled. And that 24-hour period is pretty critical. After that, as you lose time and get closer to the start of school, that fill rate goes way down very quickly. So we're trying to do what we can to get people to put absences as quickly as they, as they know them, to be able to try to alleviate that, because we're all fighting, everybody that uses teachers on call, probably the metro is fighting for the same pool of folks. So.
That's another thing. And then I had one question for Joe. As teachers get their second vaccination, will they still be required to double mask? Or is that an anticipated change in the protocol after the vaccination?
As of right now, we will still have our staff, where the two mitigation strategies, after, even after they've been fully vaccinated. The only change for staff after, after they've been fully vaccinated is a staff member who's two weeks post their second dose, or one dose if it's Johnson &amp; Johnson, is they do not need to quarantine if they come into close contact with a positive case. So that's the one change for our staff.
That'll help a lot with the subs.
Absolutely, it will.
Okay.
I just want to follow up on, thanks for asking that question, Mary, because one of the things that we did hear from our regional support team member was that a caution to make sure that as we got vaccines, both our first and second dose, that we maintained all of our mitigation strategies, because there have been cases in schools where staff and student, staff especially, were no longer being as tight with some of those mitigation strategies. And there were, have been cases where schools have had to go into distance learning. So we just want to be sure. Joe sent out an email, I think on Friday, to our staff, just reminding them that we still have to be, we still have to maintain all of those protocols. So I'm glad you asked that.
Oh, sorry, Michael.
Do you, would you be willing to spend a minute just to address the COVID, COVID variant and the news we saw out of Carver County and how that all ties together for what we're looking at here?
Sure. Thank you. For people who aren't aware, we had some news that came out the very end of last week about Carver County and how Carver County, first and foremost, saw a significant jump in their cases of COVID-19, a jump of almost 64% between February 24th and March 4th. Because of that, MDH made some recommendations to both the school districts in that county, as well as youth, sports and activities in that county, asking for or recommending a pause be taken, recommending from a school standpoint, they're currently in hybrid at the secondary level, and recommended that they stay in hybrid and not transition into in-person learning at the secondary level. They did make some changes for their high school activities, where they kept varsity sports going because of playoff time coming. And those sports that have been working all year long, they're going to allow them to continue to work. But JV levels and down have now stopped for the year. I think, first of all, what it does is it really points out the importance of, we're presenting a great plan tonight, but we have to understand that things can always change and we'll continue to monitor our numbers and see what's going to happen. Because you can have the best plans in place, but you need to be prepared to adjust as things change. As I talk to MDH, one of the things that's kind of interesting about the variant is not every test or every place is currently testing for the variant. And so trying to understand the true extent of the variant can be a little bit difficult at times. The variant is considered to be more contagious, not more dangerous necessarily, as far as symptoms are the same between the variant and the regular strand, but it's more contagious. And so it's a little bit difficult to try to say how widespread it is at this time, but it is definitely something that we'll keep an eye on as we continue to move forward with our plans.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, Jonathan?
So super encouraged, I think, obviously, for our students and families first, also for teachers at the secondary level, that they'll have two groups to teach instead of three on a daily basis and starting to simplify a little bit. My one curiosity is, was any consideration, we're going to be back prep day, ACT, grading. It's completely natural and feels really comfortable to me to be coming back right after spring break. And then there's a part of me that says people are going to be spread to the four winds for spring break and then coming back and then all coming back into the buildings. Did we give any consideration of just waiting until that following Monday? Sorry to be throwing something like that at you. It just, it was something that occurred around the dinner table at my house.
Yeah, happy to. You know, early on, we did talk, and actually, some other metro superintendents, we talked about, you know, will we all do a, a two-week distance learning kind of thing? And that really didn't get much traction. You know, our goal has been all along to get our kids in school as much as we possibly can. And we're really hoping that, you know, not just hoping, we're expecting that our families and our kids and our staff are as safe as they possibly can be, so that we can get back when we finally are able to, with the timeline given, that, that we can be in school. So we thought about it and we didn't move forward with that plan.
Stay safe on spring break, folks.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Good news. We talked about this at the beginning of the year, when they would get back, actually, everybody. So it's happening, which is exciting.
Great news.
Okay. Sorry, I got a fumble with my paper here. Well, actually. Next up is the National School Social Worker Proclamation Week. And I'm going to read this as a proclamation. All right. Whereas, school social workers play a vital role connecting home, school, and community in a unified effort to support students in the educational setting. And whereas, school social workers provide a skilled spectrum of services ranging from engagement, assessment, intervention, and evaluation of outcomes related to students, families, schools, and communities they serve. And whereas, school social worker interventions improve students' emotional and behavioral problems and have a positive effect on the academic outcomes. Now therefore, the school board of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools do hereby proclaim the week of March 7th through the 13th as National School Social Workers' Week. And we thank them very much for their contributions. I don't think we probably would have made it through the year without them this year. So we thank them very much and keep up the good work. All right. Next up is the school board meeting dates, which I think all board members have in their board packet. Just something to note, this is the new board schedule for 2021, 2022. So this would be what starts after July 1st. And one change that we did talk about at the organizational meeting that will go into place here is all meetings are scheduled at 6:00. So our school board meetings that are, are regular meetings, which have normally always been at 7:00 for years and years and years, are now going to shift to 6:00. And I think the one other thing to note that we talked about, too, was if we do need to pull a study session before a regular meeting, we'll go back to our 5:00 and 7:00, right? Isn't that the plan? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. We don't have that in here, but I mean, that could happen. So, you know, right now, everything's at 6:00.
Yep. And I think the December and July meetings, we just have one date for those. So I think we'll have to see where we're at. That could be the potential time that we, if we needed to do a study session on any of that time. And, and you know, sometimes we could plan a study session for just an hour if need, depending on what the topic was.
Yeah, depending.
So we'll be sure that we talk about that as we get closer to that July date and then determine if we need to post something differently. But otherwise, we'll plan on that 6:00 time frame if at all, when at all possible.
Okay. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that, but, okay. Next up is policy. And we have a first read on some policies. And they were reviewed on the February 22nd, 2021 session. So I don't know if anyone has any questions. I can go through each one individually, or if anyone wants to have a question on anything in particular. Mr. Holberg's here. I don't know if there's anything you wanted particularly. We didn't make any changes, correct?
Correct.
So seeing none of those, does anybody have any questions on anything between 505, 509? Anybody? Go ahead.
On 509?
509.
This has been brought up multiple times, but it does state, you know, obviously, the rules are statutory. The second thing is, is that it's always stated in here that we have to have a list of capacity by grade level, and that would be nice for us to have. You know, we talked about capacity limits and stuff like that, but having that in writing would be helpful for planning purposes.
Or are you saying in the general statement of policy, capacity of a grade level? The ranges?
The, the capacity. So you have a capacity limit, your maximum capacity that you accept at kindergarten, first grade, et cetera. And then a lot of school districts do it by school and all that. So they, so they actually understand the capacity. And then they can move around within the school. But usually, that way you can avoid this whole conversation about, every year, about how many open enrolled students you get, stuff like that, because you, you set your deadline, you know, of how many kids can come in, you know, your capacity, you know, your cutoff. And then you have the waitlist or continue to open it if you don't meet that capacity, that sort of thing. And that way, they don't really have a discussion on the actual numbers by grade and all that. Also allows you to close it a lot easier.
Right. And this is the one that we've done the 1% of total, like we, we've used these. I know we've used these, this criteria in here.
Right. We just never stated a capacity.
Okay. Do you have any comments, Jeff, Terry, on that?
You know, for the capacity review that we've done in the past, we've always done it relative to, you know, the buildings when we've been doing construction as a, as a, as a growing district. So, you know, as we look at open enrollment each year, which I know the board has requested annually that we come back and have that conversation relative to the superintendent's recommendations on where we're at with capacity. You know, what that I would understand, would anticipate is still a continuing practice. You know, we have our capacity calculations with our new additions and new schools that we'll continue to use relative to capacity coming in. The attendance boundary components that exercise that we went through, we did look at that from the standpoint of market share and people within that boundary, too. So, and then open enrollment and the district transfers are always, you know, as we have space at schools within those grade levels, and then our principals, we work hand-in-hand with our principals on what that enrollment looks like. So that's our process that's been in place. And I would expect that that will continue to be the process moving forward. So.
But you understand where my comment is, is that instead of going through that each year, you set that capacity line and however it ends up, you don't really need to go through a readjustment or anything like that. And now that we've got all the buildings built, we should be able to do that. And like, if you take other school districts, they open enrollment, they, they, they say we're closing at a certain time to see where they are within district and all that. They estimate their, their.
Yeah, I understand your question. I, I just don't know if it belongs in policy. And that would be up to the board if you want to put that into a policy. But, you know, we, we do have our capacity. It's relative to our class sizes. And so that would be the board's prerogative, if, if you would want me to work towards something in the policy on that.
Any questions on that? Anybody? Go ahead, Michael.
So my concern, when you say capacity limits, you mean a hard number, not a percentage, is what you're talking about. So my concern in putting it in policy, when we think about policy sort of our guiding factor, is that if anything changes each year, we reallocate a space that's now going to be used for special services or whatever else, that those numbers are in flux. And so I'd be a little hesitant to put those in policy. But I do would, would, you know, say every year, we come back and say, hey, there's been some adjustments at Edgewood, we're going to reallocate the space here. We're now looking at this capacity. That's my opinion.
It doesn't change the capacity, it just changes where things are within the capacity.
Actually.
If it's a dedicated space, not classroom.
Because like, we give up art rooms and, right?
So as you heard earlier this evening with budget, relative to average class size, So, as you heard earlier this evening with budget, relative to average class size, if the board were ever to increase their average class size, that would impact our capacity of students. So, our average, for our capacity for an educational standpoint, we're basing it on, I believe it's 23 per classroom in the elementary level. That average were to go higher, to be changed, from a fire marshal standpoint, we would have plenty of capacity in our buildings to be able to facilitate or accommodate students. But if you were to increase that class size average, technically, that would increase your building capacity as you look at the building.
Not quite sure I'm being, like, you set a threshold and then you can always change it, but when you set the threshold, usually, that also helps you plan. And right now, you know, even especially going into it, our threshold's gone like this. And the reason why we go through this whole thing every year of where we're going to get the students or whatever is because we do it a combination to budget, to what we need, and, and all that. And, and again, you know, with this planning with teachers, for instance, you take a look at the school districts that voted on where they want to be next year, let's say, in October. So, parents in the district know, hey, this is our deadline if we want to open enroll. This is where they say they're going to be, there's a set rule at that time that states, okay, if we don't meet the capacity we need either for budget or whatever for that year, then we continue to open up and you have the waitlist. So, I'm just saying that it's, we got a little bit closer when we did a capacity guideline the year before last. It, there's a reason why a lot of other districts have those hard numbers that they set and the rules behind it. Now, if you make an exception, like, we don't have the students or we need this extra space, then you adjust it then. But sometimes it just seems like we're, every year, it's a new adventure. And so, the reason why the open enrollment statute has this is so you can determine what your 1% is ahead of time.
Sure.
That's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
No, I, I think I'm tracking there. I, I, you know, it's not something that's historically been in the policy, I mean, we've had a process where we've annually looked at that. You know, I don't expect that to change, you know, and we do have capacity numbers that we still, that based on the new referendum with the new space, we, we do have those calculations. Be willing to present that to the board for additional clarity at the next meeting, or at least send it out as a, as an email follow-up to say, here's what our current capacity is relative to our average class sizes. So, I, I don't know, you know, as far as a policy is concerned.
For policy, I'm not hearing direction on the change of that, other than the question?
No, I, I have the question, I'm, I want to ask you a question. So, the threshold, you're saying a threshold, so like, in this scenario, he's saying 23, it's like there.
That's, that's a class average.
Right, that's a class average, but are you saying like, the threshold could be higher than, I mean, is the threshold like, we're, let's say, I'm throwing a number out, 28?
No, 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 it's, it's like kindergarten, 612, something like that, across all of it, okay?
So, you're looking at a full grade level, so like, 700 students per kindergarten.
That's the requirement in the statute, notice that the 1%, right. And therefore, you plan according to that, if you need to make adjustments, then you do. But that's why, like, when they have open enrollment for a lot of districts, they'll say, okay, we can take in 612 kids, we estimate we're going to get so many in district, therefore, we've got this much of a gap, and they put a deadline on it. It not only encourages families to register and make their final decision in a timely manner because they don't want to lose their spot, it gives us better planning. And, and, and so, and also, when they go to the state and they say, okay, we have to close it completely, or we can go to the 1%, they have that number that's set in precedence that they know how to do that with. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I, I, you know, I, I'm not certain the, the specific districts, you know, we can have that conversation online, offline. You know, I, I think too, some districts that where they, where they've aged out their school district boundaries, maybe where enrollment projections might be more, they need more stability in how they do long-term calculations, that might be a strategy that's a little bit more, you know, something that they look at more formally. It, it's just not something in my experience where we've looked at that. I mean, as a district with land, we haven't aged out technically our, the area in our school district, so. But I understand what you're saying, looking at a grade level, say, you know, we're looking at 700 kindergarteners or 700 all the way across the board, that would be our target, you know, that would be, you know, that, that's a strategy. I, I don't know how that fits relative to capacity, you know, but I think that would be further conversation as we look moving forward, so.
Okay. All right. Do we, I guess I'm, do we want to pursue that? I'm asking people here.
I think a strategy is different from a policy, right? So, so while I think it does make sense, I think the, it doesn't necessarily need to be in the policy, as long as it's something where we're considering the strategy for a procedure, for, you know, our procedure for open enrollment, or enrollment in general.
Jeff, what were you saying, the capacity that you could send out to us, the capacity numbers?
I'm sorry, can you?
What was the, what, you said you could send us an email with capacity numbers?
So, when we were going through our evaluation of capacity relative to the amount of classrooms, looking at what, as a board, as a district, we were going to ask the community to help us with capacity planning. We did a analysis of what our current capacity was relative to, once we have all our new additions, Hamilton Ridge, New Wing at the high school, what our capacities would be at all of our new buildings. So, we have that, it, it shows the adjustment of Lola de Lago shifting over to Grainwood. I mean, that, that's a document we've used for planning purposes and how we've established our calculations for capacity by building.
I'm just wondering if there'd be value in that or not. In knowing that, I don't know if there is or not.
I, I believe it's been shared with you in the past several years ago.
I was going to say, yeah.
It's not a brand-new document.
Yeah. I think it'd be helpful, yeah, just send it, I think it would be good to send it to us. As far as putting this in policy, am I seeing majority of people that want to have this type of language in policy, or are we comfortable with the way it is?
I'm comfortable with the way it is. I, I, to me, the policy is more about who we accept and less about the formula for how many or, and, and numbers. As I read the policy, this is, this is more about who we take.
Is this a lot based on MSBA? It is?
Correct.
It is, okay. Anyone else, as far as, are we comfortable with the way this is? Yes, I'm seeing nods, Julie. Enrique, yes, okay, okay.
Makes sense, Julie.
Okay. Continue as is then. Anything on any of the other ones, 524, 525? Anybody have any questions on those for Jeff? Yep, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
And it's just a statement, I'd have no problem with it, all I just want to say is legally, usually, on the filter, on, on policy 524 and 300, you don't say limited expectations of privacy on your own stuff. You say no expectations of privacy, and that's what most attorneys ask for in unacceptable use. That just is a, whether you choose to exercise it or not, but it's usually a get out of jail free card in case you need to get in there for any reason.
And where's that exactly, Mary, on 520?
That's under the statement of filter. On, well, on the second to last page of the policy, you'll see a.
The unacceptable uses or?
I'm trying to find it, yeah, so, under 524, it's three, four pages end, 524, 1, 2, 3.
Oh, under filter?
Yeah, section. It's, it's under section 3, filter, that's an underscore.
And A, B, C, D, what, what is it?
The A is actually where it says you have, you know, limited expectations of privacy is in there. Oh, it's just that what I've experienced over the last 10 years doing this stuff is that attorneys say, just put in no expectation of privacy. That way, you don't ever have to argue if you need to get in there. It is the technology of the school district, it is their device, et cetera. And I, I know that this is the language that's been in there for a long, long time, I'm not sure if you guys just want to ask.
If, if I, I think I found it, I think it's later on where it says limited expectation of privacy.
Oh, yes, sorry about that.
There's the statement there that says, you, the one you're referencing, users should expect only limited privacy in the contents of personal files on the district's electronic technologies. I, I can certainly reach out to our legal and consult on that.
Can't we just say no? I mean, I hate to say that, but can't we just say?
Do we need to reach out to legal?
Do we need to? Reach out to, I mean, can't we say just, you shouldn't expect any privacy?
I, that's what I've always used, and that's what, you know, my corporate counsel and everybody else recommends, is just to put no expectation, not limited or not, whatever. It's just a safe, it's a, it's a gate.
You know, there's a few other policies our legal counsel's looking at.
Okay.
I'd be happy, and it wouldn't take all that much time for them to provide a quick chat about this.
I mean, I'd be supportive of that, just in lieu of.
So then, for the, so I'll work, and we'll, there'll be an adjustment, most likely, to this policy for the next meeting that I will highlight.
Okay. Okay, anything else on those group, that first group? All right, and then, there's no second reads right now, okay? And then we're moving on to the final board approval. So, these policies below, and I'm looking for direction on if you all want me to go individually, or if you want me to go in a big group, or if there's a, like, grouping you want. That, these have been reviewed and presented for two readings prior to this, and so, board action is being requested tonight that we approve. I don't know if you guys want to do it by the 200s and the 600s, or if we want to do them all at once, we can certainly do that.
I'm comfortable with all at once.
Everybody comfortable with all at once?
I'm always the, the, the one that says something here, so. I still have an issue with the, with the 600, the very last one on there.
605, or?
It's the, it's the.
Oh, the 514? The chemical use and abuse?
It was, yeah, chemical use and abuse, and then it also had with that the.
The procedures.
Policy for the procedures, right? I still, I, I would like to pull that out because that's the only one that I still don't agree with because we haven't made any recommend, made any adjustments for sport hopping. And then, the other thing that I.
Well, let's hold on before we, let's, so, I'm going to make a motion that we do 205 to 605.4. Let's take those for approval. So, I'll make a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Michael. Any discussion or comments on those? Okay, it's a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Aye.
Michael? Aye, okay, that, those passed 7-0. Okay. We want to, you want to, for us to discuss this, you probably need to have a little motion or something you want to, you want to, what are you asking?
Well, I, I'm okay with everything except for the last one, so the 60.
The 514 is one.
The 514, and I've never been that, a fan of the punitive portions of it, but because we don't have any compensating controls for this, and we discussed this, I think, the first time it went through two, two years ago, and I didn't agree with it then, simply because, you know, I don't want to punish the students, but I do think we need to develop a, a better way of dealing with it, and we've never been able to get to a conclusion about how exactly to do that. We did mention some of the other mechanisms that were recommended by the Minnesota Courts Association, the Refs Association, et cetera. It didn't go through. Again, I don't like the punitive, the individual punitive, but without the, without the ability of putting anything else in there, as it stands right now, all we keep doing is just lessening the consequences. And individual consequences have proven that they don't, they don't work, we're not really helping the kids. The other thing that I had an issue with is in the policy is when you go down to the very last page with the grid, where it talks about the violation table, we still have not put anything in here to, to stop sport hopping in order to satisfy the violation and then continue on with the primary sport.
Right, well, I would say at this point, I mean, I know we've just talked about this, you've discussed it at meetings and don't agree with it. I haven't heard from the majority of the board, the majority of the board has been supportive of this policy. So, I think is why it's moved on to the fourth and final one. So, I'm going to make a motion to approve it. If there's a second, then let's have more discussion.
I'll second.
Okay, Jonathan, there's a second. So, I know Mary's made points about why she disagrees with it. Is there any other comments, anything? Anyone else? I know Russ has spoken to this. I know with the lessening, I mean, I've been here seeing it at its full strength. And things work for a short period, you know, like, things work for a short period of time, and I know we've continued to adjust. I think we've tried to go to a more restorative, not punitive. You know, with the change with the captainship being allowed to be, I think is a very positive thing because I know we've seen that, where kids have grown from the experience and ended up would have been great captains, you know what I mean? So, I'm supportive of this, I think, so I don't know, I guess I hear from the rest of the board if.
I'm very supportive of it too, I like the growth mindset approach. And in terms of sport hopping, I get that, I get the concept that that's, that kids do that, like, I understand that. But, I'm not really sure how we could create a policy to deal with that because we don't want to discourage kids from trying things either. Like, what if this does open up a door for a kid who struggled and then they try a different sport and it actually is a win, right, for the kid? So, you know, in terms of policy, I understand what you're saying, I just don't know how we execute on that effectively.
Well, the concept of sport hopping is so they go to a sport they don't like so they can sit out for the games.
However, they're 16, they don't know what they do or don't like, you know what I mean?
I, I get that. That's, I just wish that they, you know, there's a difference between kids who need help, which I think we absolutely need to give. And those, I've, I've seen too many of them pass through the system as almost martyrs or heroes to their friends because, you know, they got away with it, et cetera, it doesn't hurt the team or whatever. But, in, in, in my experience, and I think that if you go to Hazelton, if you go to Washburn or anything like that, most of those counselors will tell you that a coach has a, has more power with any student than the parents or a teacher or whatever just because they, they look up to the coach and things like that. So, they've recommended mitigating controls of, you know what? There's a fine line between kids who need the help and those kids who are just simply breaking the rules. And that happens, I think, more often than not. And so, what they do is they, they, they have coaching strategies to say, okay, you want to screw up, you want to do this, your whole team suffers. And then they don't want to do it because then there's the peer pressure involved. There's other mechanisms too that seems to be the most popular, but it has to happen through all the sports. And that's, and it's a philosophy that whole schools have jumped into, and as a result, the cases have gone down, particularly during the season. But here, we punish the individual, and we, and in the, and I don't like punishing anything. They're not learning from it, they're not, and, and actually, they, they tend to get more of the high fives coming back. So, and then, if you're allowed to join, let's say, the golf team and you have no intention of golfing, you just sit home, you know, when they go out to the meets, that sort of thing. And, and so, what are we really trying to accomplish here? Because we do have issues, I mean, we haven't, we don't really enforce that much, but that's a whole nother issue. So, what are we really doing to help the kids?
So, I think there's, I think there's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot to address, I think.
This is a policy.
This is a policy that's gone through, I think, four different readings.
And I get it. I'm the only name.
And, no, 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 I, I, what I want to clarify is, as I look at the philosophy, and you guys have all heard the presentation multiple times, about our education-based activities and athletics programs, and the unbelievable, you saw two of them tonight, the unbelievable coaches and advisors that we have working around kids, just because something isn't, isn't in a policy, we can't pretend that those coaches aren't having conversation after conversation and helping to grow kids into the best possible, human beings making the best choices possible. I don't, I don't know that there's any policy that's going to prevent some of what happens with our students, but the relationships that our coaches have backed by policy that is working to be more restorative and to recognize that that we do make mistakes and how do I return to the group strengthened? So there might be different philosophies of how to do that, but the inside-out coaching philosophy around an education-based activities and athletics program is excellent for our kids. So again, but we're going on a policy here.
Right.
But I just want to be really clear that what our coaches and advisors do to support students um is not just about punishment, it's about support along the way as well.
Yep.
Well, in my understanding on this, and obviously we weren't here for the prior, but this is athletics and activities, right? So this is not just.
Athletics.
This is speech, debate, all these things. Um, I don't know that this is, we're only asking to allow somebody who had a ninth or tenth grade violation to become a captain. Is that the only thing we're asking to change on this?
It's the only change.
The change, yeah.
The only change to the policy, yeah.
Okay. But you're asking for further changes to it that aren't on here, but we're on the third reading. So I'm, because I'm new to this, right? I'm just trying to figure out, um, because I think it's unfortunate that Russ isn't here to speak on behalf. Um, if we're restorative, I think kids learn from other kids and their mistakes. And so the only reason I see that as an opportunity is because the ninth and tenth grader has made a mistake. I have not experienced sport hopping. I know that it's a term, but I can tell you what, we have a very, very dynamic and excellent, it's not like I could all of a sudden be like, oh, I'm in basketball and I'm gonna go play flute. I mean, I just, you can't just go out for golf in a team in a school with, I mean, three thousand students. So again, I'm curious what I'm missing in that we're looking at one thing that's in yellow. If we're looking for more policy changes, why has this taken so long to get here? And is this something that's just been carried forward from the past? Because I, I'm missing something.
It has been discussed before, and I get that I'm the only name, so I'm.
Mary, Mary, Mary has said this year after year. I mean, and so, I mean, it's when this policy comes up, and this is a change, and we've talked about it, we probably talked about it each time this has come through. I, my experience with this, and I, being the Minnesota State High School rep on the board, I do have reactions at times with, when this policy comes into play with families. And so I have meetings with these families that this affects. And this change is being brought up because of meetings that I've had with families and how it has been punitive. And so this is kind of writing something that we felt was too punitive, and so that's why this change was coming through, and Russ wanted to make sure it went through before he left. Um, in my experience with those, you know, uh, different, you know, exposures with the policy, it has always been um, you know, what can we do to to get this child on the right track? It's always been a positive. There's always been um, you know, a chance to hear a a ch- a child's voice and to reach for help. I mean, it's always been about the kid and what's best for them. So I'm very comfortable with this policy. I think this policy works very well. I'm glad we're being able to make this change. I'd like, totally supportive of this change going forward because I've seen it in action and I've seen what it can do um, to a negative effect a little bit, but then I think we have a chance here to to make sure that it it can be a restorative thing for kids to see, hey, you know what, you can screw up, but then, you know, things get better. I can, I can be an example and I can move forward. So I'm very supportive of this. Um, you know, I I'm sure there's other things out there, um, but for us and how I've seen this policy work as, as being on the board over the last ten years, I feel like this is the best version of itself. So I'm gonna be supportive of it. Um, unless there's any other comments or questions.
I'll just, I'll just add, I will also be supportive, and I think when we have uh great people with expertise who make recommendations, it's our job to support those, and I think that is exactly what happened here. There isn't um, there isn't a person involved with student athletics in the state of Minnesota that's more concerned with the athletes and their health and their well-being than Mr. Reitz. And so if this is what he told us was the right thing to do, that is a slam dunk for me.
Okay. So I think we have a motion and a second, correct? If I'm recalling. Okay, so this is a roll call vote. Uh, Jonathan?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye. That passes six one. Okay. Uh, next up, administrative reports. Superintendent report?
At Prior Lake Savagery Schools, our mission is to educate all learners, to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. And tonight I just want to highlight a couple of things that help us meet that mission. Uh, the pace has picked up at the Capitol, as you all know, considerably as committees work to get bills heard before the first deadline, which is March twelfth. Last week, education organizations, many of which we are involved in, called for fast action on COVID mitigation bill, and through a joint letter are asking legislative leaders to pass a COVID nineteen education recovery package before leaving for their legislative break on March twenty-sixth. Leaders urged the legislator to pass a pa- package that includes pandemic declining enrollment aid, summer program funding, additional flexibility for extended time programs to address learning loss, extended flexibility for distance learning next year for students and families that choose it as an option, and streamlined processes to obtain a short call substitute teaching license. I just want to invite all of you to feel free to reach out to our legislators. Um, I did that today, uh, just urging them to pay attention to this in a timely manner, uh, so that we can plan forward wisely. Um, we discussed tonight our budget adjustment process, um, and I wanted to share with you some information from around the state. The Minnesota Association of School Business Officials released a report last week with survey results that show the majority of public school districts will be budget reducing or cutting for next school year. Of the hundred and forty-four school districts that responded to the survey, ninety-two percent projected that with no formula increase, their general fund expenditures would exceed projected revenues for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, with several district deficits ranging into the millions. This is largely due to the enrollment loss and increased expenses due to COVID nineteen. According to the Minnesota Department of Education, I think I shared this last week, seventeen thousand students withdrew from public schools last fall to due to COVID-related concerns. Um, the February forecast indicates a one-point-six-billion-dollar surplus. Part of this is due to the pandemic-related student enrollment decline districts have experienced. And then we will wait and pay attention as we see how things go throughout the session. Um, some fun news, last Thursday, Connect to Kindergarten Drive-Thru Book Parade was a huge success. Hundreds of incoming kindergarten families visited their school to collect a book donated by the Prior Lake Rotary, along with a bag of activities for students. The event was designed to get students excited about kindergarten and encourage families to enroll for next year. Our kindergarten open house event will be held on May eighteenth, um, and we hope to be able to uh safely open all of our elementary buildings so that our families and our kindergarteners can tour and be in our schools. And then lastly, this came in just uh, just uh, a couple hours before the meeting, but the Minnesota State High School League uh released the results of the Constitution Amendment vote, which guarantees two seats on the Minnesota State High School League Board of Directors for two superintendents. The vote tally approved by the Minnesota State High School League Board of Directors today was four hundred and eighteen in favor and twelve opposed. So that passed. And we'll be hearing some things, uh, that'll be two superintendents that are um, uh, I think assigned by M.A.S.A., the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. Thank you.
Okay, um, administrative reports? Anybody? No? Amy, I think I'll have you go.
Hi, guys. I just, I just have a super quick um update about the, kind of the general vibe of the student body as we are, have been hearing rumblings of transitioning back into um full-time in-person learning. And, I mean, now it's happening, so I think the rumblings were all super positive. Everyone is just so, so excited. I know the people, like, I've been distance learning this whole time, and I could not be more excited to go back full-time and be with people and be with my friends and my teachers. Um, so yeah, it's just super exciting, and thank you to all of your har- all of your hard work and everyone who's behind the scenes on this, just working really hard to get us back into school. And I think everyone, all the students are very thankful um for everyone's work, and we see that everyone is working and trying to get us back, and we're very excited to be back. So, thank you.
Awesome. We're excited too. Uh, any other board reports? Anybody? Michael?
I have a few, but just.
Go ahead, go.
Um, I attended AMSD with Dr. Stahl, and Stacy, you can speak to that. Um, we, our early learning advisory committee met last week. Um, and two comments there, they are looking, it's been hard during COVID to keep their membership up on the advisory committee, so they are looking for um additional people to join that early learning group. And you can reach out to Aaron Metoxin at Edgewood if you're interested in learning more about that. It's a great group to be a part of. Um, and secondly, um, just sort of a message from staff and the uh parents who serve on that committee, just to make the public aware that that staff has been teaching throughout COVID with those early youngest learners. And so um, just to kind of acknowledge that we're so excited to get everyone full-time back, but to to thank them for all they've done to keep those early learners in there. Our engagement and legislative committee met today, and um, Ricky and Amy may add more, but just briefly, we had a brief meeting with Dr. Holly today to get a sense of asking him to help us connect the dots with the um, uh, training that has already been done in our school district, um, with CLR, and connecting that forward to the work we've been doing as a board and get input on what sort of professional development we might look at as a board and what role that might play going forward. So our committee will be meeting and discussing, will come forward with some proposals later, um, after we've re-touched base. Um, I attended MSBA officers' training and also had an opportunity to serve on a focus group for the Page Amendment through MSBA, which was very educational, so.
Board reports?
Um, I have a handful of items. Got my feet wet with uh Community Ed Advisory Committee. It was their first meeting in a long, long time, um, with all the things that happened last year, and had a one-on-one uh with Leanne as well, so getting to know that world a bit more. Um, we had a FLIR meeting last week, um, confirming just some of the details about historical fund balance, um, and and Jim continuing to elaborate on the process of the rightsizing and and staffing numbers. Um, and Dr. Stallow and I visited uh the good folks over at Sheffers Pond and Patrick last week, and so had had a great visit there.
Okay. Any other board reports? Um, I'll just say, Michael and I and Dr. Stallow were at AMSD. It was pretty interesting. I know it was NWEA, which I can't exactly remember, Northwest Something Education?
Yeah, they did the map testing.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's right. There it is. And um, they're starting, they're doing some testing, obviously it's virtual, just to see where kids are at and what kind of gains and and that kind of thing. I think they've tested four-point-four million children across the United States, just to see how COVID's really been affecting. Um, and I'm gonna oversimplify, like extremely, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but um, reading, math, reading, you know, it looked like gains, you know, some kids made gains, not, you know, twenty, I think it was twenty, twenty-five percent. Fifty percent made like the appropriate level, right? And about twenty-five percent were, were like, lost some ground, right? Basically, wasn't it? And it, math is worse. I mean, basically what they were saying is math has suffered a little bit more than reading, and, you know, there's a lot of, they haven't really dove into exactly why. Obviously, parents can help at home a little bit easier sometimes with reading, but they literally have just kind of started doing it. So they're doing a lot of, a deep dive into how this is really gonna affect. So they'll, they'll be having more, more coming out, but they have tested four-point-four million kids across the United States. So it's pretty interesting. It'll be, I think it'll, I mean, I just think as research people, they're probably like, this is gonna be super fascinating on how this all works out. And there'll be a lot of things to learn and gain from it, I think, you know, I don't know if you want to speak to it a little bit, but.
Well, I think there were, yeah, certainly more than, you know, the study was just with the four-point-four million. And what was interesting in it, you know, I think you're right, the the reading and the math, there were differences in in the the learning. But they also took a look at who were the students that, and I don't have the right word, but it's who were the students that were missing?
Right.
Who were the students that tested last year that weren't testing now?
Right.
And we know that it was students of color, uh, it was school districts and some students in some poorer communities. Um.
Yeah.
So, so I think that also is, you know, what we all have to pay attention to.
Team, yeah.
Yep, is what are, what are the impacts um.
Yeah.
As we move forward.
But I think there'll be some pretty interesting.
Yeah.
They'll get some really good information coming out of there, so it was, it was interesting. Um, all right, uh, other than that, I'll move on to future events. Um, March twenty-second, um, there's a school board study session at six o'clock. Uh, April second is end of third quarter, and April fifth through the ninth, um, there's no school grades E through twelve, as that is spring break. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Homemade.
By Mary, second.
Second.
By Enrique. I'm assuming all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, close. That passes seven zero.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Enrique?